I call them maybe to order. Call the order, call the bro please.
Bolt, Dillon, Harrod, Finley, Rutherford, Seehorn, Salter. Do you have a form?
If anyone's standing, we ask for our, our manager, Don, give us a prayer. Thank you, Don.
Let's pray. Almighty God, from whom all blessings flow, we pause now to thank you for this beautiful day, for this wonderful weather that you've given us, and for the great city that we live in. Lord, we ask that you would continue to bless us, bless our community, especially bless this city commission. May the work that they do here tonight be pleasing unto you. Lead, guide, and direct us to do what you would have us to do and keep us safe from harm. We'll give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number one, citizen participation. A three-minute limit per person, a 12-minute limit per topic. So, anyone have anything to address the issue, please come forward and sign your name.
Oh, Ed, I called you here far back. I want y'all to forget me at 82, I may not be back this way one time. Want you to be sure, oh, you got one. I'm Corina Wilson Pickens, and in southern Oklahoma, I had an on-TV talk show for seven years. I was a newspaper reporter and columnist for 43 years. Well, my husband passed away, and Jean Pickens passed down that way because she knew my husband. His wife had passed away, so I'm a resident of Shawnee, and he brought me up here because, of course, I had an on-TV show down there, and then I was newspaper reporter for the paper and all. But, I'm a two-time cancer survivor, and so this was a lot better to drive to Oklahoma City than driving from, you know where Long Grove and Wilson is. And so, rather than driving that distance. So, I'm proud to be here tonight, but not about what. I've been boiling for about a month. I have a real good friend that's a general. We've been friends since he was in Iraq. Well, he was here recently, and he was at Tinker. And so, he was over here in Shawnee, and a little lady by the name of Carrie Foster, she drives him down. Now, I want some of y'all to get off of your rear and get out of your house and drive down some of the alleys in Shawnee. This little Carrie drove the general down the alley behind my house, and a lot of the yards was filthy and trashy. Very embarrassing. And before, before he arrived, one Sunday morning, I didn't feel like going to church because I have lupus and a lot of other stuff. And so, I thought, well, what is that ignorant woman out there peeping around this big old tree? So, I got up and I said, honey, what are you doing? Oh, I'm taking pictures. I live in an old, 180-year-old, two-story house. So, she's out there, she said, I'm taking pictures to make sure our general won't get shot while he's here. Well, I've lived here since 2002, and nobody's been shot over there, but the alleys have been trashy. I don't know what position Carrie has with the city, but I think you need to educate her. If you have a three-star general that comes to Shawnee, and you want to make an impression on him on visiting your town, make sure she doesn't drive him down the alley where all the trash is. And Ed, you know I've called you about trashy alleys.
You know I've talked.
I keep my yard clean, I keep the trash picked up, and I expect everybody else to, and not just throw the trash in everywhere. But I don't know if you have any dealings with Carrie Foster, but you need to educate her.
Thank you.
Ms. Pickens?
What?
Do you have a few minutes after? We can talk. I'm changed, I'm the city manager.
Well.
It's very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I'm hot.
That's all right.
Well, no, I'm not.
Anyone else?
I may be 82, but I still got a little bit of piss and vinegar.
That's not bad. I just turned 80, so what you talking about?
Hi, I am Taylor Shakarby. You'd think I'd have this writing in the same time. And I'm with the Blue Zones Project, and I just wanted to give you guys an update on the mayor's challenge. So, sorry, he isn't here, but I'll give an update. So, he, before the school year started, challenged all of the kids in Shawnee to walk from Shawnee to Okinawa, which is a blue zone in Japan. You know, the distance, obviously, we're not walking across the ocean. And we are now halfway there, so that is a very exciting thing. Last week was National Walk to School Day and gave us a good boost, so even kids who don't regularly walk to school were able to participate last week. OBU lacrosse team has stepped up, they're walking with one of our schools every week. Bank First stepped up, they're walking with a school. First United has stepped in and said they would give an additional prize, which is exciting. And all of these are really great, and we're using all of the built environment and the sidewalks and all of the things. We are very grateful that you guys passed the Safe Routes to School Plan, and the Safe Routes to School Plan doesn't have any, you know, direct request for dollars, just saying that we acknowledge these things are priorities. And just as sort of a reminder, there is a crossing that 50 to 75 kids are using at least once a week at Bryan and Bradley for the Grove Walk to School, and there's no crosswalk there. So, even just paint or something there that is a top priority, and we appreciate that you made it, you acknowledged it as a priority. So, just reminder that we have kids who are regularly crossing a rather busy street without any crosswalk. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, I'm not going to be better at this. Let's see. I am Zoe Lozier. I can do that. And I work at Community Renewal of Potawatomi County. That's enough, thousand more Kickapoo. And I am here to report about National Night Out. So, last Tuesday, October 1st, Community Renewal, excuse me, encouraged its block leaders to throw block parties all over the city of Shawnee and Potawatomi County in conjunction with National Night Out that happens nationally, including with our, uh, Community Renewal in Shreveport, which is the original Community Renewal site. And I am very excited to report that we had 30 block leaders throwing, participating in parties. We had 20 parties happening across our community, and we had 407 neighbors attending block parties on Tuesday night. And this is significant for a couple of reasons. We know that our society is incredibly isolated. We see that crime in a community is directly correlated to, one, how visible neighbors are to each other, and then also whether or not neighbors know each other's names. Those have direct correlations with the amount of crime in a community, and we are very excited that 400 neighbors got out to get to know each other last Tuesday. And we wanted to keep it small this year, which is kind of funny, but we are really looking for this, to this being something that happens on a regular basis in our community. So, thank you guys so much for what you do, and that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Miriam Bell with the Blue Zones Project, and I am here to talk about water because the Well-Being Coalition, working to be, to create the first well-being district in the community, and the Food Policy Council have chosen hydration specifically in our park and our recreational areas as an emphasis for this upcoming months, in the upcoming year. So, taking that direction, the Blue Zones Project is working to identify partners to help fund, do installation on a water fountain at our most utilized recreational trail, which is the airport trail. More specifically, at their sister city's park, where outdoor recreational users, who we know there are around 200 per day in the summer, in our hottest months of the year, and they have to bring their own water, or if they forget, there's no access to good drinking water. So, just a heads up, and just to let you know that we are working to make our community move a little bit more and drink a little bit more water along the way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance. Okay, we're going to move to item number two, Consider Approval Consent Agenda. For any items anyone would like to have removed or discussed or anything.
Motion approved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Gillum. Call it, I'll call a question. Motion carries six days. Item number three, Presentation of Adam Control to present the pet of the week. Oh, we got one in a cage today. You won't chance that we're letting it out?
No. So, we've got Twister here. You want to say hi? Twister is about four to six months old. He is a male cat that has already been fixed. So, adoption fee, if you live inside city limits, you're looking at $10. If you live outside, you're looking at five. And he is super sweet, he's just scared.
I imagine.
All right, have a good night, guys.
Thank you. This was a mayor's agenda item, and since he's unavailable tonight, let's, we'll just postpone that to the next meeting or to another meeting when he's here. By the position of the chair. Consider Budget Amendment to Capital Improvement Funds 301 for reallocation of budget for the purpose of Chevrolet 1500 crew cab for fire prevention. Ashley Neal, Ashley.
So, this is just a reallocation of the budget from fire suppression to fire prevention to adjust for the purchase of the Chevrolet crew cab that was approved with the consent agenda. So, if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
You have any questions of Ashley about the transfer? No questions?
I have a question on the prior one that we didn't get to. Do we need any action on that? Because it was a discussion. Joe?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
On four?
On item four.
It's just a discussion. It was a discussion item, so since it wasn't addressed.
Well, the advisory boards, and the reason I'm asking is, don't y'all include like the senior citizen advisory board? I was on it when Kate was on it, and since I'm 82 and considered a senior citizen, I'd like to get involved in that because I've been involved on the board over there, and I'm on the one on Hart Street.
Would that have needed to be deferred?
Well, it could have been deferred, it could have been tabled, or you could move past it, which would show as no action taken. And then, in which case, since the mayor requests it be placed on the agenda, obviously the authority to do that again for a future meeting. So, if you'd like to revisit it to pay the war, defer, that would be fine, but no action at this time.
Long as we're good. Vice Mayor had it under control.
All right, back to item number five. Anybody want to have any questions? Ashley, will we? Anybody question? We need a motion to, Commissioner Bolt, have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rutherford, call a question. Six days, thank you, Ashley. Public hearing, consideration of ordinance rezoning property located east of North Kickapoo and north of South Shawnee Mall containing 79.85 acres from A1 Rural Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District for the purpose of single-family residential development. Case number P1619, application, applicant Greg Brown Holmes.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This is a rezon application to do an 80-acre single-family development on North Kickapoo, kind of behind Shawnee Mall. We anticipate there going to be a housing need in this area as we see North Rock Creek and their new high school, and more development out that way. Included in your packet was an opposition letter that we received at the last moment that talked about issues with flooding and the bridge that is in that area. We try to keep private development separate from public infrastructure improvements as we would not ask the developer to take part in that. However, you can argue it's cart before the horse that we have to see more development out there in order to raise that infrastructure need on our priority list. Staff and planning commission both recommended approval of this development as it's going to fulfill another housing need that we have for the city of Shawnee.
The developer had to contain his runoff anyway.
Yes.
So, it's not going to add to that.
Yes.
But it does need to be addressed.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions from Ms. Blaine?
It's good to see the development going into those things.
Amen.
Absolutely.
No other time, good job. Okay, thank you, Rutherford. We call a public hearing to all those opposed to the project, please come forward at this time. All those opposed? All those opposed, all those for, speak for the project, may come forward. All those for the project, anyone for the project?
I have one more question. The, that letter protest said something about the sign not being posted 30 days prior?
Yes, and that is incorrect. We have photos of when it was posted. It is a large parcel, so I'm not sure if they were looking for the sign to be in a different location.
It's just a standard, small.
The yellow and black signs. Mm-hmm.
Okay, I declare the hearing closed. Any other questions for, back and forth, move on? Any more discussion? I agree with Mr. Gillum, it's nice to see him developing, in the process out north of town, that's an area that's been underdeveloped, so I'm tickled to death to see that this is finally going to happen. Need a motion?
I move to approve.
Commissioner Gillum moves?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Seehorn. We call a question?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll read the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Joe.
Thank you. An ordinance concerning zoning classification for the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, commencing at the southwest corner of said southwest quarter, then it's north, 0 degrees, 39 minutes, 2 seconds west along the west line of said southwest quarter, a distance of 1,319.46 feet to the point of beginning, then it's continuing north, 0 degrees, 39 minutes, 2 seconds west along said line, a distance of 1,319.46 feet. North 89 degrees, 4 minutes, 50 seconds east, a distance of 2,638.42 feet. Then south, 0 degrees, 54 minutes, excuse me, 0 degrees, 21 minutes, 54 seconds east, a second, a distance of 1,320.38 feet. Then south, 89 degrees, 5 minutes, 59 seconds, west, a distance of 2,631.83 feet to the point of beginning, from zoning classification of A1 Rural Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
I'm sorry, Joe, I forget to do that every time.
I wish, I wish you'd have kept that one forgotten.
All right, we call a question, I'm sorry. Six days. Item number six. Or is it seven? Seven. Consider an ordinance to approve the administrative rezoning of property located at 430 North Tucker Avenue containing .22 acres from R, I guess, R3 Multi-Family Residential District to C3 Highway Commercial District and declaring emergency. Case number P1719, applicant city of Shawnee, Rebecca.
So, this is more of a housekeeping item. We had an open records request to confirm the zoning of this property and see what ordinance we had on file, and we had no ordinance on file. So, this property historically has been used as a pharmacy, as well as a sign shop to manufacture signs for businesses around town, and it's been used as those two, which are C3 business uses, for 40-plus years. So, we would simply like to honor that zoning that it's been used at, that it would get to continue to be used as such, and we're not sure where the R3 came from. It might have been a typo, and they meant C3 on the map. That is just kind of due to lack of record. Staff and planning commission both would recommend approval of this item.
Any questions from Rebecca?
Thank you.
Need a motion and a second then.
Motion approved.
Commissioner, I'll second Commissioner Gillum.
I got your back.
Read the ordinance, I'm sorry, Joe.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. An ordinance approving the administrative rezoning of a certain property within the city limits from R3 Multi-Family Residential District to C3 Highway Commercial District designation and amending the official zoning map of the city to reflect said reclassification, providing for severability and declaring an emergency.
Let's call a question. Double turn the pages for now. Item number eight.
Vice Mayor, before we move on.
Oh, we need emergency. All right, so we need a motion to approve the emergency clause.
Move to approve the emergency clause.
Commissioner Gillum makes the motion, Mr. Commissioner, hold seconds. Six days. Thank you, Joe. Item number eight, Presentation by RG, or RDG, Planning Design Discussions, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve the 2019 Comprehensive Plan.
Hello, welcome. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and all the Commissioners. It's great to see you again. My name's Amy Hazy. I probably should sign in, too. I've done this a few more times. My name's Amy Hazy from RDG. I was the project manager, and I'm a principal at RDG, and I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight and joining us in this. I have a few slides I think we're going to bring up to just kind of summarize and remind me what I was going to say tonight. So, let's see, I forgot to double-check here, but there we go. I just really quickly want to go over a little bit of the process that we've gone through, and then a little bit on how to use the plan. If you will remember back, I think it was in February, I came before you, and we shared what the goals that were identified within the plan. I didn't think that it made sense to kind of go back over that again tonight and retread over that, so I thought we'd focus a little bit on kind of the process that we'd been through, just as a reminder for everybody, and then how we can use the plan going forward as your tool, and then some of the next steps. So, in really tiny print, here is the schedule that we went through over the last year or so in the process, and I'll zoom in here, still gets a little blurry, but as you can see, we started in February of last year, well, February, March of last year, with this process of setting up the schedule and doing some. Our first big meetings happened in June of 2018. We had a number of outreach meetings then in June, July, and August. We also had a committee that we met with on a regular basis, and I would actually like to pause because I believe there's a number of our committee members that are actually here, and if they wouldn't mind standing up, because I'd like to tell them all a big thank you. They met with us on a monthly basis, that's the numbers on the bottom there, and kind of gave us feedback, and Commissioner Bolt was also on our committee, so thank you for doing that, and met with us and gave us feedback throughout the process. Did I do something? There we go. Now, in the last few months, there's been a lot of rigorous overview of the, in review of the, of the plan itself, and I'd like to thank everybody that took the time to do that, our committee members that participated in that process. So, that started roughly in about March or so. We had an open house in March, and then the committee started reviewing all of the document, and had actually started the review process even before that. In May, the planning commission and the traffic commission did their first review of the plan, and they spent, the planning commission spent about three meetings actually reviewing and discussing it, and then the traffic commission also took another meeting to review and finally make their recommendation as we move forward. So, I'd like to thank all of those groups and all those individuals for taking the time to look this over and give their input. In addition to a lot of that public input, we also did some online things. We did a survey at the very beginning where we had almost 180 respondents, and then we had monthly updates on the website itself. I'd like to spend a little bit of time talking about, and I'm happy to answer any questions later in the process and the public engagement piece that we went through. I'd like to spend a little bit of time on talking about how we can use the plan as you move forward, and I really kind of categorize it in two different ways. The core reason most people do a comprehensive plan is for the land use piece of it. This is what's going to help you, guide you in your land use decision-making pieces of it. But we're firm believers that all of this public input that we're doing to come up with the land use plan is also a great opportunity to think strategically about the community, and we talked about those goals in the meeting back in February that I attended with you. So, there's also this kind of strategic planning aspect, I think, that comes out of the plan, too. On the land use side, and how we would use this, there's kind of two different levels to this. So, this is all within chapter three. So, if you're looking at this 100-page, 100-some-page document, focusing, the land use piece is all focused in chapter three, and this begins with, I'll call it the 30,000-foot view of the policy areas. So, the policy areas begin to break the community down into kind of common areas, areas that have common issues, common opportunities, and to identify specific policies that we would use. So, if a project's coming before you, that's one area that you might want to first look at. What policy area does it fall in? What are some of the recommendations that we're making within this part of the community? The next level of this, then, is the future land use plan. What do we see as the land use within this area? And how, this is then broken into two pieces, it's a decision-making framework and a compatibility matrix. I think the decision-making piece and framework, so each land use that's identified on that map has a whole page dedicated to it in the document, and I hope it's pretty easy to read and skim through, but it gives a description of what that land use is, it tells us what its potential zoning could potentially be, the intensity of the use. So, is this kind of a low-intensity, maybe residential area, or is it a higher-intensity sort of commercial use? So, it talks about the intensity, it talks about the uses that we would have there. Some of the form, and when we talk about form, we're talking about where is it maybe located, how does it, how does traffic, how's it relate to our transportation system and so forth? Compatibility, what are other uses that should be happening around it that are compatible? And that's tied closely to the intensity piece of it, too. And finally, we also address a little bit of parking. How would you address parking in those areas? The second piece of this is actually a late addition that we made to the plan, and it's kind of hard to read on here, but this is what we call a compatibility matrix. And so, it's at the very end of chapter three, and that allows you to look at, if a use comes before you and it's a residential use, I'll give it, we were just actually kind of having this discussion. So, on this, we put that, it's a one-to-five scale. One means it's not compatible at all, the uses probably don't make sense next to each other, up to a five, meaning it's very compatible. So, you're going to have a full range in those uses. One of the things we spent a lot of time talking about is some of the mixed-use sorts of things. And really, I think the important thing there is that we drill down into what exactly is the use. So, if you look at the land use map, we identify a lot of mixed use along the Kickapoo corridor, and that's a great example where we have an opportunity to do what we call horizontal mixed use. We can also do some vertical, but we have some horizontal going on there. So, we have some commercial uses that people want easy access to, but it could also be a great opportunity where we would have some higher-density residential sort of tucked into those, and they've got easy access to the commercial uses, but they also, because they're a higher-density residential use, they generate a little bit more traffic, and they've got good access, and they're not all funneling into a neighborhood street, but they're funneling onto Kickapoo. So, it's thinking about those sorts of things, but do we want to put maybe intense car repair business in that area? That might not make as much sense. So, we can use, begin to use this compatibility matrix along with that decision-making framework that tells us about the uses and gives us the description. So, these are all the different tools that you can use to kind of compare things and look at things and I'm happy to talk a little bit more than, more about that. The strategic plan piece of it, um, I think is one of the more exciting parts of the plan. Uh, each chapter, following the land use chapter, there is a chapter dedicated to different focus areas. Transportation was the one I grabbed here. And in those, not only are the goals identified, then specific initiatives are identified along with policies or action items that you will need to think about to help, um, implement some of those initiatives. Finally, um, we, oh, I shouldn't say finally, but another part of this, I think, that falls into the strategic planning is, um, we, we were excited by the, the ideas that residents have and excited about the challenge they gave us to think big with them. And so, there's a few locations where we worked with the community to think big, think about big ideas, um, that might not, that we started to even sketch out on paper, uh, that might not get implemented in exactly that way, but hopefully they are, give a, kind of a mustard seed idea that builds and grows for individuals in the community to get them excited about big ideas and projects that can be done. Um, finally, the last chapter is the implementation piece. And this is also a great tool, I think, for you, this last chapter, um, as a commission to regularly kind of look at on an annual basis. So, so one of the things it does is it's, it has a table in there that identifies all the initiatives and policies that are identified in the plan and gives a little bit of a summary and it identifies the timing of that. It identifies who should take the leadership on implementation, who potential partners should be, and if there's a need, if it's something that would need, need to be funded, potential funding sources for implementing that. So, I think this is another great tool to, that kind of almost summarizes the whole document. The other piece on this, this ties together how we use the plan and next steps, um, which I think's really important. We always say your plan should be a living document and we hope that on an annual basis that you be, that you review it, that you and the planning commission take a little bit of time to review this, identify, do we have any hurdles that we're struggling with to implement the plan? Are there ongoing issues that we need to continue to address? Um, are there modifications? And this is all just related to code things, so that can be one of the first steps in the processes. What are some of the things within our code that are inhibiting us from being able to implement our plan? And then, on an annual basis, looking, using it towards our capital improvement program and action items that we maybe want to take. So, that's where you can go back to that table that kind of summarizes. And I would also encourage, and actually our committee talked about this a lot, that as a community, you're doing a lot of really great things and let's take a moment, maybe on an annual basis, and celebrate those things. And I think this can be a great opportunity to say, what did we accomplish in the, in, from our plan and celebrate that and now what do we want to do in the coming year? And then, also as part of that annual evaluation is that land use component of it too. Um, what land use things have changed, what new things have come about, um, that we weren't expecting when we were standing here, you know, three years from now, that we weren't expecting would maybe change, um, and how does that begin to adjust in our land use plan? So, that's a very high-level overview. I always know that it usually win points if I keep it short, so. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And again, I'd just like to thank everybody, thank all the community members for the, the past year. It's been a pleasure working with everybody in the community.
Pretty impressive, actually. Has built-in adjustability and of course reviews yearly to see how that certain areas develop, which might slightly change it in certain directions. Pretty impressive.
Yeah, I appreciate all the, the work you guys put into this. Um, I've been involved in from the, the get-go and, and I, I kind of like looking at things like this, but, you know, this gives us like a twenty-year view on, you know, kind of what to do here in the community. And I think that's real important because I think in the next ten years even, we're gonna change a lot. And I think it's important we have a plan, otherwise, there's no telling what we'd end up with. So, um, appreciate all the work you guys have, have put into this. And I guess, when they're done with it, I guess you kind of take it over, Rebecca? Is that right or? Yeah, that's the only question I have for you, but, but, um, so you, you'll probably look at it annually or, or whatever we need. Uh, Amy, there was a, a map that Marty was working on with all kinds of cool ideas and stuff. Do we have that or is that in there somewhere?
The one that I kind of have.
Well, I don't know that, I mean, but he had all kinds of things sketched on it and I loved looking at that and I didn't know what else he had come up with, but I didn't know if that thing still existed or?
Probably, it should be, it's probably in there in some rougher forms, maybe some snapshot, but some of it, if it's the land use piece, it did kind of get, um, put into the future land use map.
Okay, very good.
Um, and then, yes, there should be also this drawing in there too and kind of broken down with the different, and so this is if, uh, this is downtown and the park and how we can begin to connect that all together.
Yeah, very cool.
Fortunately, I was building mental pictures because what we see there is not very impressive.
Well, yeah, and that's.
Size-wise, readability and various other things, but.
Yeah.
Uh, you did lay out a good picture in my mind where I saw where you were going with all of it.
Good, thanks, yep. Um, and, you know, and it's always that, I know here it's kind of blurry and in the plan, we always try to balance out, you know, this isn't the core focus of the plan, so how deep do you want to go and get people thinking that that's exactly what the city's going to build? I think the key piece on that around the downtown is how do we take some public investment that could potentially happen with the park and create development opportunities or create environments where the private market wants to invest in the areas around that? And so, that was, that's kind of the core concept there is how do we create a space that across the street, somebody says, I want to invest there because I want to be across the street.
Leave them into it.
Yep, right.
Yeah, agree. Well, I had another question, but it slipped my mind, I was listening to what you were saying. You had a hundred and eighty people had input in this?
Oh, at least, yeah. That was just on the survey. That was just the online survey.
Survey. Did these people seem really, uh, in, let's say, a part of that? Were they really invested in that? Did you feel they really had ideas?
Yeah, I would, I think.
Or the surface?
Yes, I think we had some, we had some really great meetings. It was really interesting. Our afternoon meetings were, it was kind of, um, opposite of a lot of communities. We had some really great attendance at some of our afternoon meetings. We moved around locations. We did a, uh, um, we did a session at Community Renewal that had great attendance and at the Blue Zone office and a lot of community members came down, shared a lot of ideas with that. And I, I can't, did we give you a summary report of all the community comments? Okay, yeah, so that's an, a kind of an, a, almost, we didn't put it in as an appendix, but we could, but it, it's a summary of all the comments that we got at every, at every meeting too, so.
Categorize them, did you?
Did we have them? I don't remember. I think they were categorized by meeting.
So, did you get property owners that own the property that you're talking about? Did you talk to any of those?
Um, we, you know, we did try to, in, especially on the future land use map, we tried to engage, um, some of the bigger property owners that were in the area and invited them to a number of the meetings. Um, you know, it, the, all we can do is invite and, um, we tried to do that in a number of locations. I would say in the, in the downtown sessions that we did, we had pretty good engagement. I don't know if we got a lot of involvement from the people that are across the street from the park and so forth, but, um, uh, but they were, you know, the advertisement was out there and they were invited to, to come and attend.
I had, uh, taken at least two pages of notes and questions and so forth, but, uh, city manager reminded me this is just a working document like the, like the, uh, budget is. There's some things that I totally disagree with in there, so, but I'll defer those to whenever the commission has an opportunity to, uh, to make those decisions and I, uh, know from being on the, involved in the commission since in two thousand, uh, much more background than some of the information that's provided in here, so that's, uh, when it comes to appropriate time, I'll relay those to the rest of the commission. I don't know that tonight is because we just, uh, like I say, this is a document that, uh, sets a standard of working document and it, it's up to the commission to adopt it as it goes through the, through the process, so if anyone else has any questions and. I had, did have a request that, uh, some of the commission hadn't had an opportunity to read all of the, uh, report that it be tabled tonight and to the next meeting in order that, uh, they could, uh, spend more time on it. We just got it over, I got it Friday, so it's pretty, I had to spend the afternoon today, uh, finishing reading it, so if there's somebody that didn't get an opportunity, we could, uh, table it and come back and visit it as our, as our next meeting, that way you'll have an opportunity to, to go follow with it.
I think that's a good idea, Vice Mayor, because I believe it's a hundred and seventy-six pages, I don't know, there about. And it's been very interesting reading and everything going through it and, uh, I hesitate to say one thing, but I keep thinking about a former legislator that we had in Shawnee, those of you that have been around for sixty or so years, um, his name was John Levergood. And he was, he read every period and every T and every I and he said, you need to read every line because there may be a wooly booger in there somewhere. And, uh, I would like the opportunity to really sit down and read it and go from there. So, I would like to defer.
So, will we move on for any questions? Uh, we have Rebecca or, I'm sorry, I've got.
Amy.
Amy, will we move on? Or we have a motion to, uh, to, uh, table it to our next meeting?
Yes.
Mark makes them, we make motion, mark the table in three seconds. We'll have a motion and a second then to table it to our, to our next meeting. Any other questions or comments? We call a question. Motion carries, say, I do appreciate all your work and appreciate the committees' work on, I know there's a lot of time spent and, uh, on this document and it's very difficult to work through and it's taken some time, so we do appreciate. And Ed, we appreciate your, uh, joining in on this and, and doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number nine, consider a bid, community center roofing project open.
Must've been needed for a long time, we had to set trash cans there.
Good evening, commissioners and happy birthday, Mr. Harris. Unless they tied the wrong blooms to your mic.
I'm sorry.
Happy birthday.
Oh, well, thank you.
Uh, staff went out for bid on the community center roofing project, uh, September seventh this year and advertised in the newspaper and mailed out bids to several roofing contractors. Uh, we're here this evening to open these bids received. The last time the roof was replaced was a year ago this, or thirteen years ago this month in two thousand and six. It started to leak some in various places and it's, it's just time that we, uh, remove and replace the old shingles. Uh, the project will be funded out of the facility repair portion of the half, half-cent temporary sales tax.
Okay.
Received four bids. George Schultz, Quality Homes LLC bid twenty-six thousand nine hundred. Heritage Hills Roofing and Construction bid twenty-nine thousand three eighty. Cavens, I'm assuming that's how you say that. Cavens Construction Group bid thirty-four thousand two hundred and forty-one ninety-nine. Super Roofs and Sheet Metal Incorporated bid thirty-three thousand four hundred. Uh, this, uh, staff would like to have time to go over these, these bids and, uh, would like to consider awarding this, uh, at the next commission meeting, October fourth.
Defer to the next regular meeting. Okay, we need a motion to defer. Hold them from Commissioner Gillum, second, from Mr. Hall. Call a question.
I had an idea about the owner wanted to.
Ben, did you? Motion carries five, oh, six eight. Item number ten, new business.
No new business.
I have no new business. Commissioners' comments, we're gonna start with Ben tonight.
I don't believe I've got any comments.
Mark.
Uh, I guess we'd have, what is it, trick-or-treat night at Expo Monday?
Yes.
Four to eight. Is that right?
Four to eight.
Four to eight.
Mr. Rutherford, you have any comment?
Mark already stole my.
What?
Mark stole your thunder again. It doesn't matter which direction y'all come from, I mean.
I'm sorry. They, uh, they had. Yeah, right, I'll get, Ronnie, you want me?
I had about three times in the last month that scams have been attempted off of the messenger and various other things, so be extremely careful. If anybody ever says something's on there that they need to take off, never let them inside your computer because that opens the door to whatever that they want to do to it. Just be careful. We're heading toward Christmas season, there could be a lot of people out there trying to make some extra money at your expense, so just watch it.
Um, one, one quick thing I have, I wanna, wanted to brag on one of our folks. A couple of weeks ago, I guess it was, I did a ride-along with one of our police officers on an evening shift and, um, I want to tell you, that was a really good experience. I was very, very, very impressed with, uh, Richard Ruiz and how he dealt with folks in the community. It was great to see how, um, first of all, it was kind of a quiet night, which was, was good, but, but anytime we did deal with folks, he was so good at de-escalating situations and keeping things under control and, uh, I was very impressed with the young man. And, uh, in fact, we took a lady to jail 'cause, you know, we, we, it was just for outstanding warrants. We, we took her to jail and she actually thanked him. Which, you know, 'cause he dealt with her so well and, you know, she had, wasn't doing anything wrong that night or anything, just happened to be sleeping under a turtleneck and we just checked on her and, and, uh, but anyway, he, he was able to work that situation so good that, you know, in what was a bad, I mean, anytime you're put in the back of a police car with handcuffs, that's not a good night. But, but when it was all said and done, we got up there, she actually thanked him with how, uh, she was dealt with and, and his kindness and, and understanding. So, uh, uh, chief, it was, you know, good job and I appreciate you guys letting me ride along and I was, I was very impressed with your folks. That's all I have.
I have two or three comments. First of all, uh, appreciate the hard work on the, uh, on the community, uh, plan, on the strategic, strategic plan and we appreciate the hard work on that and all, everyone's a committee and, and everything, so I know that's over a year's work, so we do appreciate it. And, uh, the, uh, one thing that, uh, my wife and I attended the return of the Beatles downtown disappointed in the crowd, but not disappointed in the performance, so I went in and I see Ken shaking his head back there, was also there, so, and, so, uh, it was a good performance and, uh, was, uh, sorry, you know, everybody missed it. Uh, one thing that the, the comprehensive plan addressed and Ms. Pickens was the dilapidated structure and the alleyways and stuff like that, so I will tell you that, uh, in the next, we have to do some cutbacks this year in, in our budget and so forth, but next year, hopefully, we'll be able to put money in there for a person to, uh, inspect the alleys and inspect the dilapidated structures and so forth and also some money in there to take care of those structures, but we could not do that this year, so, uh, please bear with us and, uh, we'll try to take care of that after January the first, so if you'll, uh, kind of, like I say, kind of bear with us, we'll take a look at that. So, we appreciate your support and su- appreciate your comments and, uh, we are cognizant of the problems and are aware of it and the report also called it to our attention, so we appreciate that. Any other comments, anyone?
Just happy birthday.
Oh, I was gonna say, thanks for indulging my birthday. My wife's been celebrating my birthday for what, at least three weeks, two months, so. Thank you for indulging that. Well, uh, stand adjourned, we go to the airport autho- uh, municipal authority or airport authority, what's next, please. Airport.
Airport.
Consider approval of the, we have a quorum, consider approval of the consent attendant.
So moved.
We have a. We have a motion by Commissioner Sehorn, second, Mr. Hulk, call the question. Motion carries, six A's. New business.
No business.
No, being no new business, we'll send the cur to go to the municipal authority. We still have a quorum. I consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
So, that's a move by Commissioner Hulk, second, Mr. Gillen, call the question. Thank you very much, appreciate it and we're all adjourned, thank you.